Okay. Are you ready? Okay. Sorry. If we could get everyone to take their seats, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, March 11th, 2019. If everyone would please stand for the pledge in a silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Brunelli.
President.
Alderwoman Mary Grace Cavallo.
Present.
Alderwoman Cotto. Alderman Dijo Ben Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman G. Comey.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy. Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman NuJang.
Present.
Alderman Sherman. Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Here.
Fourteen present. Oh, we're all. Alderman Cottos here. Fifteen present.
Thank you. With that, we have a quorum. The first item of business on the agenda this evening will be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the Board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, if you call the first speaker.
First speaker tonight from 93 Kelsey Street, Danielle Albert.
Hi, everybody. Danielle Albert, 93 Kelsey Street. Several months ago, after the demolition delay, or the dem-- pardon me, after the demolition of Trinity Church in an attempt to protect our most vulnerable properties, a group got together at Silas Bronson to discuss the implementation of a demolition delay ordinance and the potential creation of a historical society or commission. Shortly after, many came here and spoke in support of moving that process forward. I've reached out recently a few times to those who led that meeting and have been told that we're waiting for a follow-up from downtown. Everyone here knows that when you don't follow up, you lose people. I don't believe for a second it's the intent of anyone here to lose the importance of the creation of this ordinance and a historical society or commission. I'm a Waterbury transplant, but my roots and those in my children are here. We need to protect our history because once it's gone, demolished, and carried away in a dumpster, everybody will forget it. The value of what is contained in our buildings is not something that one can put a price tag on. What happens if we let those buildings be destroyed? What happens once those who are old enough to tell the stories of seeing John F. Kennedy at the Elton are gone? That history will only be protected if proper protocol is put in place. Moving this forward isn't necessarily going to be an added expense to the city. All it will take is some time from people that have already come forward, those who came to the podium and those who signed the 700-name petition to save Trinity Church. There is state and federal funding available for restorations. It only needs to go through the proper channels, and that begins right here with all of you. When I sought out the property at 5 Johnson Street and completed the RFPs for my own sober housing project, I did the research. I discovered one of the first female doctors in Waterbury lived in that house. Aletta Langdon Bedford, originally from New Jersey, earned her medical degree from Cornell Medical College. Aletta Bedford set up her practice in Waterbury in 1906, moving into a large house on the corner of Willow and Johnson Streets. Her office was on the south side of the house with a separate entrance on Willow Street. That is the house at 5 Johnson Street. Instead of being sold to Bush Columber to be modernized and updated, if we had a historical committee, that property could have possibly been restored, preserved, and protected at no expense to the city. There's also been extensive community dialogue regarding the creation of a police museum and how it was supposed to go in the Kendrick Building. In 1982, that building was listed on the National Register of Historic Places. If we create a historical commission and involve those who are truly invested in protecting Waterbury's history, imagine how that building could be restored into a phenomenal community resource honoring Waterbury's finest. Look at what Joy Brown and Bully Manor did with the Welton Carriage Shed. I urge you to begin to move this process forward with the creation of a demo-delay ordinance. This cannot be left stagnant. Get the community together to begin the creation of a historical commission, building upon the history that the Mottetuck Museum holds. Protect our valuable assets like St. Mary's School and the Margaret Croft Building from potential purchases and destruction. Imagine if Bridgeport didn't embrace the history of P.T. Barn. Bridgeport has a historical commission. So I'm formally asking you as a Board of Aldermen to consider starting the process and adding it to new business for discussion this evening. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening. Lawrence DePillo from 11 Steuben Street. The item I'd like to address first is your item number eight, requesting approval of a contract between the City of Waterbury and Malone and McBroom for design services involving East Main Street's streetscape. Project is estimated to cost $4 million and will provide a completely renovated streetscape. I understand that there's extensive work to be done on that and to pull up all of the bricks, which unfortunately, over the years, has been very poorly maintained by the city. And Windy Utilities, both Eversource and the City of Waterbury, did work on that streetscape. Those bricks were never replaced, and the street unfortunately is a combination of brick and asphalt. And now it was going to be pulled up and completely asphalted. What I want you to have WDC look into, which is very inexpensive, is what they call stamped asphalt. And it is used extensively in a number of towns and cities. And I have a copy here that I'm going to drop off, and you guys can take a look at it. You can look it up on the Internet just under stamped asphalt. And you can have your street stamped, either to look like brick or marble. You can have marble-type sidewalks put in. And the whole operation is colored asphalt. And if it needs to be dug up for any reason, it can be re-asphalted, recolored, and made to look exactly like it was originally. So that would add a little bit of, let's say, a nicer avenue for the Palace Theater and the Yukon and the downtown. So I'd very much like you to have WDC look at the possibility of that and see if it makes sense for the downtown, since we're going to be spending $4 million. The other issue is your old business regarding the points that I had submitted at the last Board of Alder meeting. I see that that has been referred to the Civil Service Commission. They have not yet met, and I'm looking forward to, hopefully, a very positive response to having all entry-level jobs in the City of Waterbury receive the 10 points. And then have this board have a public hearing to hear from the public, and then ultimately, an ordinance change. So I want to thank you very much for those two issues. And I'd like to leave this with the Aldermen so that they could take a look at these stamped streets. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. I'd like to wish everybody a St. Patty's Day, you know, when it's coming up, March 17, which is Sunday. And I just want to let everybody know I'm happy to see my fellow veteran, Mike Dalton Beck. Mike, we miss you at the Post 201. And I'm glad you're back in the saddle, and hopefully, you'll be coming down to say hello to us. I have some things I just want to talk about. I'm a member of the NRA, and I'm glad Mr. Napoli is here because he represents the district where he is, in the 73rd District. And I just got this because I am a legitimate gun owner, and I just thought I'd bring this out because I know we have fellow veterans here and probably in the audience. But this is Senate Bill Number 60, which allows police to stop citizens carrying handguns for reasons except to demand that they present their pistol permit. Now, to me, this is too much government interference. This is not what the veterans went to war for, to be, have the, you know, the government taking care and control of our lives. Here's another one. House Bill 7218, which requires gun owners to make their firearms unavailable for safety fence if they have a minor in the home. Now, I've had my guns for a long time, and yes, I'm a family man, and I've never had one incident with the kids at home. Just want to let you know. I don't have a lot of time because I have other things I do want to talk about. Then we have House Bill 7219, which ended centuries' old practice of home-manufacturing firearms for personal use. Now, you know, you guys know I do Civil War reenacting, Revolutionary War reenacting. I do it because I had ancestors in boat conflicts. And I do it because I'm honored to keep American history alive. And Mr. Napoli, you know that, all you members of the Board of Aldermen, especially you, Paul, because you came to a lot of our events, and I do appreciate that. Then we have House Bill 7223, which requires gun owners to have locking safes in their vehicles to transport handguns if they step away from the vehicles. So in other words, if I have my handgun in my car and it's not locked away, I could probably end up getting arrested. You know, this was done today. Unfortunately, I had to work, and maybe I could talk to Mr. Napoli about this later. Okay. The other thing I want to say is I do want to talk about this. I wanted to thank Mayor Neil O'Leary for appointing somebody on the Human Rights Commission. That's Shanika Howard, Human Rights Commission. We spoke about that at our last Human Rights Commission meeting, and I'm really happy to later to that. But we have one more appointment that's got to be made on the Board, and that would be a Democrat. Okay. I know I don't have a lot of time, Paul, and he keeps saying that. But last time when I was at the Board of Aldermen meeting, I don't know if people are aware of this. I'm WDC, anybody's here. But they have "Do Not Speed" signs, and they're up in Prospect on Scott Road, and they're battery-solar-operated, stationary signs. And that's something I think you guys should look into for the City of Waterbury. We could put them in, you know, the north end, the south end, the west end, the east end. And here's another one. "Do Not Speed" on Scott Road. And this is a sign that says if you're going too fast, to slow down. And that's something I think we should look at. How much time do I got, Mr. President?
About a minute, but don't feel compelled to use it all.
Okay. Okay. Anyways, the Chase Building across the street, they have too many broken windows, and it's got to be renovated. I hope we can do something. If WDC is here to get that cleared up and fixed up because if you look across that building, across the street, the windows have fallen out. Also, many city roads need to be paved ASAP because we have many potholes along with several ruts and running many vehicles through this, ruining many vehicles. I had something I want to say. It's something I think that Larry brought up, but this is something I found. Recently, I found this on the, this new information on the web. It's called "Benefits of Recycling Wasted Tires Into Rubber Asphalt For Paving Our Roads." New research that is affordable at a very low cost, saving us millions. You got to go to the website, and I hope you guys pay attention on the Board of Aldermen and the ladies. It's www.nutransportationresearch-record-number-310. And that's something I think you should look into because this is brand-new, brand-new technology. And that would mean taking all the old tires, junk tires, if you will, and transferring them and putting them into use on the roads, in the city roads. Because they got the steel belted, which will make the binding hard and it'll make it more durable. And that's something that, I know they're doing that in Europe. I know they're doing that in China and Japan. I know other countries are doing it in India. And I just thought, maybe you guys would want to look into because this is something we're going to, you know, the year 2020, in next year, and maybe there's something we should do and look into it. Okay.
That's time, Mr. President.
Waterville Community Club Meeting this Wednesday at 6:30. Old Waterville Firehouse. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Real quickly, I would ask for unanimous consent on item number four with the police and fire radios. Seems that they haven't had any problems that I've heard of, so why change the company? And I think it's a reasonable price. Item number eight, as far as the streetscape. You know, yes, I agree with one of the speakers about the pavers, but at the end of the day, that project is more than just removing the pavers. It's also replacing a water system that is over 120 years old. It's investing in traffic reunification. I mean, traffic down there goes from two lanes to one instantly. And if you're not too careful, you might end up in a car accident. So I think on those two fronts, you know, we could talk about pavers all day long, but at the end of the day, why are we going to put pavers that most likely are going to have to come up because of replacing the utilities? Item number nine on the agenda, I would ask you to pass as a park commissioner. Once again, I am very thankful to Jim and Kathy Smith. They are true people that believe in our park system. And this is just another way of their commitment to the park system in the City of Waterbury and Webster Bank's commitment. So I would ask that that pass. Also, on the agenda, I would ask that you pass the item number six, the agreement with the Blue Collar Unit. Yes, I happen to be a member of the Blue Collar. I'm glad to see many of my colleagues here tonight. We worked very hard with this administration in the city to do the best we could, not only for the city, but our bargaining unit. And I got to hand it to the mayor because the mayor has said to us repeatedly that he understands that we are the lowest-paid in the city and has made every effort to do what he can to help us. Yes, we're taking a zero like every other union in the first year. That's our commitment to the City of Waterbury. And I would ask that those that ask every year when going through the department heads, especially when it comes to Blue Collar and asking, could we privatize this? Could we privatize that? This is our commitment to the city. And most of us live in the city. We're taking a zero in the first year. We took the insurance that the city came to us years ago and asked us to. We all understood that if we didn't do that, that our taxes were going to go up. And most of us are city taxpayers. So we would ask that your continued support and pass this. And I just want to thank the mayor again and also thank him. Anytime he's come to us and said he's going to do what he can, he's a man of his word. We've heard over the last few weeks people say that, you know, in the paper and everything, that he's a liar. But when it comes to people's livelihoods, he's a man of his word, and he's doing what he can for the employees in the city. And me being a, not only a citizen of the city, but had been educated in this city. I was taught you can't spend more than what you have in the checkbook, and that's exactly what he's doing. So I just want to commend him. I want to commend the financial staff, and I want to commend all of you guys. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Before we go on to the committees, I do just want to welcome back Mike Dalton, who hasn't been with us for a while, but he's back here tonight. Happy to have him with us. He's up and around just in time for St. Patrick's Day. Go figure. All right. You should have two items on your desk, items number 11 and 12, which are refunds from the Board of Public Works that just didn't make it to the agenda on time. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to add those as new business items. Item number 11, which is the refund in the amount of $1,583.97, and item number 12, which are the refunds totaling $13,207.49, and refer them to the Finance Committee as, to the Finance Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. The motion carries. The items 11 and 12 are added. Just for your note, you should also have in front of you number packets for number five and number six, which had been emailed to you last week, but these are the paper copies. Number five is the agreement with the City and the Nurse Supervising Bargaining Unit. And number six is the agreement with the City and the Blue Collar Unit. And then you should also have item number 10, which had the cover letter as part of the packet, but did not have the underlying agreement, which is simply the license agreement with St. Mary's, with the Immaculate Conception for 20 parking spaces up on East Main Street that the city will be leasing from the Immaculate across from the police station. So with that, we'll recess into-- oh, before we do that, we do have approval of the minutes for the meeting of Monday, February 25, 2019. Is there a motion?
Motion approved. The minutes of the regular meeting on Monday, February 25, 2019. So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any changes to the minutes? Corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. With that, we'll recess into committees. We'll do both of them out here. We'll start with Finance and then go to Intergovernmental. Thank you.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number four. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a contract between the City of Waterbury and EF Johnson for the maintenance of the city's radio system. Said contract is for a five-year period, which commences 12/1/2018 and shall end 12/1/2023. Total contract amount for the five-year period is $1,177,195 at a yearly cost of $235,439, payable quarterly at $58,859.75 as submitted by Stephen Gilmore, Captain, Waterbury Police Department.
Motion to approve item number four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you very much. Was this contract put out for RFP? Do we know? And would it be put out for RFP?
No, it was a sole source, so there's no RFP.
No RFP. We've had a relationship with this company for some time now?
Since 1999.
Okay. Understanding this covers hardware and everything?
So it covers all the hardware, software, any updates and any issues that would arise 24/7?
So if we are looking to upgrade the system, So if we are looking to upgrade the system, would this contract cover an upgrade or no?
There's upgrades that are included within this contract.
Okay.
So anything that they foresee at this point are covered in here?
Is this only police radios?
No. So the city's radio system is shared by police, fire, and public works.
Okay. So the radio gets run over. Is that covered under this type of maintenance, or is that a different type of?
We have another agreement with them for the equipment.
Like a damage warranty?
Yeah, so that we have a, this is for the system itself, the towers, all the infrastructure to run the system. And we have a separate agreement for all the portables and the mobile units.
And the ones in the cars, what have?
In the cars, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number five, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the agreement between the city of Waterbury and Nurse Supervisor Bargaining Unit AFL-CIO July first, two thousand seventeen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Motion to approve item number five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Alderman Sherman.
Thank you very much. This contract was voted on and passed by union members?
It was.
Thank you very much.
For the record, Tara Shaw with C-Cor Cassidy on behalf of the city.
I'm sorry?
Tara Shaw from C-Cor Cassidy on behalf of the city.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item number six, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the agreement between the city of Waterbury and the Blue Collar Unit, Local three five three AFL-CIO, July first, two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you again. Same question. This was voted on and passed by union members?
Yes, it's been ratified by the Blue Collar Unit.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following refunds totaling one thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, which were approved by the Board of Public Works on two twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, as submitted by Mark LeVek, Building Supervisor Bureau of Water. To it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number twelve, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following refunds totaling thirteen thousand two hundred seven dollars and forty-nine cents, which were approved by the Board of Public Works on two twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, as submitted by Mark LeVek, Building Supervisor Bureau of Water. To it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Standing, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of twenty-two thousand ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents, submitted by Frankie Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. That concludes our business for today. Can I get a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call in to order the intergovernmental committee meeting scheduled for Monday, March eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. And if I may get your attention, first item on the agenda is item number two. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a professional services agreement with Connecticut Education Network for the period of July first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and in the not-to-exceed amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for Computer Technology Center, Department of Education, Internet Service Provider, as submitted by Kerry Ace Wayne, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item number two.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number two, which has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, item number seven. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves the following individuals, or not to disapprove, the following individuals to noted commissions or positions, as submitted by Neil M. O'Leary, Mayor, City of Waterbury. The first, we have Shakira Howard, assigned to the Human Rights Commission, term March eleventh, two thousand nineteen to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Second individual, Maritza Acosta, Greater Waterbury Transit District Commission, term January first, two thousand nineteen to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And the third, Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance, assigned to the Retirement Board, term commencing January first, two thousand eighteen, ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion not to disapprove, item number seven.
I have a motion to, a motion not to disapprove, item number seven, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Our next item, item number eight. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a contract between the city of Waterbury and Malone and McBroom for design services involving the East Main Street streetscape. The project is estimated to cost four million dollars and will provide a completely renovated streetscape, as submitted by James Nardozzi, interim CEO, WDC. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve, item number eight.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number eight, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Nardozzi, welcome. I just have one quick question. I think it was on number eight. So I noticed on the paperwork that there's a lot of work being, being done on East Main Street, especially the water main that's being reinstalled. I was wondering, have you had any other contacts with either Eversource, Public Works, of any, is there any potential work that they might need to do prior to starting this project?
James Nardozzi, interim CEO, Waterbury Development Corporation. Alderman, we have been meeting with the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Engineering, Eversource, Frontier, Comcast, the Water Department, sewers, and wastewater treatment on this project from the beginning. As a matter of fact, as late as ten o'clock today, we had another meeting with Eversource. We have consistently, and will continue to consistently, have deconfliction meetings and scheduling meetings with all of them. And as the project grows closer, then we'll also involve the police department on issues of traffic control and traffic patterns.
Okay. How long is this project? How will this take? How long?
It'll take at least a year and a half or so. This spring and summer, we'll do all the underground infrastructure work, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, gas main, and water. And then we'll have to button up the street for the winter time. Then in the spring of two thousand twenty, then we can return, complete the sidewalks, plantings, bus shelters, signage, lighting, and benches.
Awesome. So I mean, I clearly understand that, you know, sometimes unexpected work needs to be, needs to be done. But I'm assuming that it's safe to, it's safe to assume that within the next couple of years, there's no expected work that we may need to dig out, dig up East Main Street again, right?
Correct. So we had a public meeting back on December twentieth. In addition to that, we sent certified letters, as well as regular letters, to every single tenant and building owner along East Main Street, telling them, if you plan future work to your building, this is the time, if you want to upgrade your electrical, or upgrade your sewer, or upgrade your water, we're gonna have everything done up. Do it now. I've consistently stressed to the staff that what I don't want to do is embarrass us at WDC by digging up that road six months after we've put four million dollars into it. We will continue this, continuing talking with all the property owners and all the stakeholders along that way. The goal is to do everything right, do it once, and not have to go back.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I think that you answered my question, you know, heading towards what I was looking for. The only other comment that I wouldn't, I just need to add is, I was a proponent of pavers from, from the get-go on this, on this project. I understand that, you know, the expense. I also understand the safety concern. But if there's any, any way, you know, I would echo Mr. DePullo's words, is there anything that can be done to kind of keep somewhat of the character of, of East Main Street? That would be, that would just be a great addition to kind of complement the way East Main Street is now.
Well, there'll be another public meeting once the final design work is done.
So it's not too late for pavers. I'm just kidding. No. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, item number nine. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a project authorization letter between the city of Waterbury and Waterbury Development Corporation. The city is the recipient of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar gift from Webster Bank, along with a pledge of an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for renovations to Library Park, as submitted by James Nardozzi, interim CEO, WDC. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve, item number nine.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number nine, which has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item, item number ten. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves a license agreement between the city of Waterbury and the Church of the Immaculate Conception, also known as the Basilica in the Immaculate, of the Immaculate Conception, East Main Street, three twenty CRT eighteen dash two two four, as submitted by Mark Oulet, Legal Advisor of Waterbury Police Department. Alderman Napoli.
Mr. Chairman, motion that we approve, item number ten.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number ten, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Is there a representative from W, yeah, just have a quick question. So I just don't know where this lot is. I think it was explained to me where it is, but if you could just make it official where this lot is.
For the record, excuse me, for the record, Mark Oulet, Legal Advisor for the Waterbury PD, Bergen's Funeral Home is on East Main Street. The lot is just to the left of that, across the street from the police station.
On the left-hand, if you're looking at the police station, it's on the left-hand side of Bergen, of the funeral home.
Looking at, looking at the funeral home, it's on the left-hand.
On the left-hand side. Perfect.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That was all my, just wanted to get that clarified. Any further discussion on item number ten? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.
With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. Before we start with the consent calendar, I neglected earlier, and I apologize for this, to remember to recognize the Begnell family. Joe Begnell Senior passed away last week. Joe Begnell Junior was a member of this board for a number of years. He's the chairman of our park board. He's a vice principal at the Northland Middle School, and his dad was an institution in his own right here in the city of Waterbury. So I would ask that you all keep Mr. Begnell Senior, Mr. Begnell Junior, and their family in your prayers and thoughts this week as we go forward. And with that, the following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is receiving place on file. Item number two is on consent to approve a professional services agreement with the Connecticut Education Network for the period July one, two thousand nineteen through June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, and the not-to-exceed amount of two hundred and forty thousand for Computer Technology Center, Department of Education, Internet Services. Item number three is on consent to receive and place on file the financial status report for January two thousand nineteen. Item four is on consent to approve a contract between the city of Waterbury and EF Johnson for the maintenance of the city's radio system for a five-year period commencing December first, two thousand eighteen, running through December first, two thousand twenty-three, the total contract amount over the five-year period of one million one hundred seventy-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Item number five is on consent to approve the agreement between the city of Waterbury and the Nurse Supervising Bargaining Unit AFL-CIO, July one, two thousand seventeen through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Item six is on consent to approve the agreement between the city of Waterbury and Blue Collar Unit, Local three fifty-five AFL-CIO, for July one, two thousand eighteen through June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. Item number seven is on consent not to disapprove the appointments of Shakira Howard to the Human Rights Commission, Maritza Acosta to the Greater Waterbury Transit District, and Michael LeBlanc to the Retirement Board. Item eight is on consent to approve a contract between the city of Waterbury and Malone and McBroom for design services involving East Main Street streetscape, with an estimated cost of four million dollars to provide a completely renovated streetscape. Item number nine is on consent to approve a project authorization letter between the city of Waterbury and the Waterbury Development Corporation. The recipient, the city is the recipient of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar gift from Webster Bank, along with a pledge of an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand for renovations to Library Park. Item number ten is on consent to approve a license agreement between the city of Waterbury and the Church of the Immaculate Conception, also known as the Basilica of the Immaculate Conception, for property located on East Main Street, twenty parking spaces. Item number eleven is on consent to approve refunds in the amounts of eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents to Richard Myers and seven hundred sixteen dollars and forty-six cents to Joan Senna. And item number twelve is on consent to approve refunds from the Public Works Board in the amount of one thousand eighty-eight dollars sixty cents to Marcus Giaccarino and twelve thousand one hundred eighteen dollars eighty-nine cents to Northwood Holdings LLC. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved. The consent calendar is read.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Then a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar as read, and a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries unanimously. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Dijo Von Carlo as chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of twenty-two thousand ninety-four dollars ninety-eight cents, submitted by Frankie Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Martinez McCarthy, seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. With that, I would remind you that we have another meeting coming up on March twenty-fifth, but after that, the following week, April first, is gonna be the mayor's budget presentation. We're still on track to get that at seven o'clock. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. We're adjourned. Have a great week. Thank you all for coming.